Waited just a minute or two to let people join in. In the meantime, I'll introduce myself. I'm Caitlin Mallion. I'm the indoor programs coordinator. And we have a bunch of OVA staff members on this call, which is exciting, a whole team here together. So I'll just introduce everybody really quickly while we're waiting for everybody to join in. Today we'll have Joanne Lubichik, who's our executive director. We'll have Alicia Lydams, who is the director of operations. We will have LP Mainville, who is our director of high performance, athlete development, I think that's what it is. Carrie Campbell, who is our manager of indoor programs. We'll have Calvin Chang, who is our operations manager. Oakland LaCage, who is our operations coordinator. Sherry Bennett, who is our membership services coordinator. And we're also going to be joined today with Donna Sales, who's from Volleyball Canada. And she's the director of athlete and coach pathways. So if you didn't get the notification, what's happening right now is we are going to be recording this Zoom call so that we can post it later on our town hall page on the OVA website. So that you can refer back to it as well as send it to other people if they by chance missed today. So if you guys have any questions throughout the town hall session, please feel free to put them into the chat and we have staff member who will be answering them. Or as well, we are going to have a Q and A period at the end of each block is what we're going to do. We're going to take those FAQs later on, I mean, we're going to take those questions later on and put them into an FAQ and post that along with the recording online. So we will get started here. I'm just going to share my screen one second. Okay, here we go. And we will get started with this slideshow here. And I'm going to just quickly show you the agenda. We have a lot of things on today. So I'm not going to go through every single thing. I'm just going to pass it on over to Carrie Campbell to discuss the competition season.
All right. Thanks, everybody for coming online today. We appreciate it. So we're going to jump right in here. So indoor volleyball is back. Can we get an amen? So yes, thank goodness we're back. We're really excited to get the season started. We are planning for a regular season. So that means our typical nine teams on three courts. There will be, you know, some restrictions around that nine on three considering spectators and things like that. We're assuming, obviously, we will be pivoting if the pandemic changes and government regulations are updated. Our registration deadlines will be the same as always. So our first event, every provincial cup will be a four week deadline out from the event. And then every remaining event will be a six week deadline. So that is what we're looking at. And we're going to keep a soft uniform policy in effect for our first event just to make sure that everybody has enough time to get all their admin stuff in order and get all our shiny new uniforms up and ready to go. And just a reminder, athletes are going to be permitted to play on multiple teams. And that is also within our ECI stream, provided they meet age eligibility requirements. And we know that Ontario championships information, everybody's itching to get at as well, which may affect this as well. So please stay tuned. We can't really work on that yet just because we don't, that's a little too advanced in the year for us. So we just have to worry about pivoting. So they will stay tuned for that. The calendar was released on August 3rd. So we do hope to have tournaments beginning in early November and Ontario championships beginning on the Easter weekend. We have no mandatory vaccination protocols in place. We do highly, highly, highly recommend that everybody get a vaccination if they are eligible to do so and it's safe for them. And we hope to have our indoor competitions manual posted by September 1st. So just some competition info out there for you guys. And just a couple of reminders, we are going to try to capture some of those 18U's that lost their season last year. And we have bumped up a 19U eligibility for athletes. They will be allowed to participate in all our tournaments, including Ontario championships, provided they are not a part of any OC double A, OU A, U sports, CC double A teams for that same season. We are looking at this as well for a pilot for future seasons. So seeing if there is enough interest out there for us to expand our age categories and continue to offer a 19U program. And this won't be, the 19U's will be included in the 18U division. It's not going to be a separate division for the season. Another reminder that we are introducing the ceiling rule this year. So that just means that if a ball comes in contact with the season, comes in contact with the roof, it's still playable. It's not a reaser. It is just play continues. The ball cannot hit the ceiling and then go over to the other side, the other your opponent's court. It's just whether, when it's on your side of the court. There will be clarifications on that within our competition manual as well. And I forgot to mention on the 19U athletes, check with Volleyball Canada if your team is going to nationals because there will be some different rules from our organization to Volleyball Canada. So always keep that in mind if you plan on going for nationals, that there could be some differences there. Okay, we're, here we go. Okay, more reminders. Purple cards. So when was our last season? 2019, 2020. We started a pilot program with the purple cards for 17 and 18U division. The purple card is the spectator warning conduct card. So that will be rolling out for all our age divisions for all our tournaments for this coming season. We will be following step three regulations until we are told otherwise by the government. Who knows when that will be, but we are following them right now and that's what we're working on moving forward. Once we get the protocols, we will revisit some regulations such as gathering size because it's currently based on 50% of fire code limits. And then confirming that gathering size with your facility that you're hosting your tournaments at. And just again, everybody's got to keep the two meter physical distancing while not playing the game or training on court. And this, another point here is what I mentioned before is that capacity may be an issue at some tournament sites. So there is a chance that we'll be limiting spectators. So that tournament information page where all that, we list your rankings and the schedules. All that information will be up there whether or not spectators will be permitted, food will be permitted, things along that line. And tournament regulations, like scoring process, mask usage, will be updated prior to our first tournament of the year. So like we had mentioned before that, you know, this thing shifts on a dime, you know, changes on a dime. And we want to make sure that we have the most up to date information. So prior to that first term of the year, we will be hosting one of these just to let everybody know what the regulations are, how to stay safe, you know, what our tournaments are going to be possibly looking for for the rest of the season. So have a look at our town hall section and all that information will be posted there. So community use of school permits allowed by Ontario government in step three protocols. We're still waiting to hear that, you know, I'm about whether or not school boards are going to follow through with that. So Mark Wiersma, our youth competition coordinator, he sent an email out to all our club contacts asking for information and, you know, kind of just touching base with everybody. So if you have a few minutes, please respond to that and let us know where you feel your permits are. And so that kind of gives us a better idea of planning and what to look to. And, you know, even becoming an advocate for everybody out there. So to make sure that we're pushing the right people to try and get permits going. We're not really sure when Ontario will be moved out of step three. It's roughly about seven to 10 days as per the news articles. Safety plans required for each facility and each program to capture facility rules. There's no one size fits all. So that's really important to think, to know that. If you have a facility in a Catholic school, if you have it in a public school, if you have it with a church, if you have it with your community center, each one of these facilities will have their own set of regulations that you need to follow. They will all have their own set of capacity requirements. So you may need to create a safety plan for each one of these facilities. Obviously, it's, we're here to help if you have any questions about it. But I think it's just a matter of adjusting their numbers and making sure that you're including their individual policies within that plan. So be sure to make sure you touch base with your facilities and making sure that you're keeping in line with what they require of you. So utilize appendix M of our return to play protocols as a template for your safety plans. Yeah, and there we are for assistance. So Caitlin and Mark are here to help and myself. So just let us know if you need anything. And obviously, we want to make sure we're getting all that safety stuff done and getting us back on court. Okay, and just another reminder of our ECI initiative. I know it's been a busy summer for a lot of people. And maybe we're just catching up on some stuff that's been released earlier in the year. So June 2nd, we did create or release the early contact initiative. It was just changes to our, for entry level age divisions. And it was, they were made with, in conjunction with the indoor volleyball development committee. And these changes are a reflection of what's going on with our sport currently, a new long-term development model and a focus on holistic development. So just a few points here of what ECI really focuses on. Removes the chronological ages for competition at the entry level. It focuses on development stage, removes focus of winning and all, winning at all costs events in an effort to bring back fun. It removes relegation of teams after events. And that's for our traditional non-specialized age division, which is the last stage in our early contact initiative. And we do want lower entry fees and membership fees for our entry point, which is our four on four. And we will go through those fees a little later in the presentation. So ECI isn't a remaking of the wheel. It's a set of rules that are geared towards assisting our entry level players, like I said before. We are still focusing it as like, looking at our competition system as a development and part of our development pathway. It has a huge amount of flexibility built into it. So we can make sure that every athlete is finding the developmentally appropriate activity for them. And, you know, really helping to get these athletes hooked and continue their career in volleyball up until 18U. And just a brief overview, early contact initiative is, has three streams. Four and four rally ball, six on six rally ball, and traditional unspecialized. Rally ball may be a new term, but it's not a new game. Rally ball is, will be following Volleyball Canada's triple ball rules. So it's just a renaming of triple ball. And all streams will follow the season outline that's geared towards their development and includes tournament structure, playing rules, age eligibility and tiering. So each one of those tiers has a specific format that's geared towards that developmental stage. All of this can be found on our website as well. Yep, there it is on that slide there right at the bottom. So all that stuff lives there. So it's a great page. It's getting full of resources as we speak and, you know, a lot of work is being put into that. And just to go over the age divisions or eligibility for early contact, I'm not going to read through the chart just because I'm sure everybody's looking at it. So it just, if there's a yes, that means an athlete that's born in that birth year can play in that stream. If there's a no, then no, they can't. The asterisks do note that although they are eligible for that age stream, we do see the benefits of progressing athletes through the pathway and making sure that they are just playing in a developmentally appropriate game for their skill level. So not pushing them through, just to push them through. All streams do have an Ontario championships. And like I said, we have more resources on how to navigate the early contact initiative coming. So check out that link and it will be full of information for you. And I guess we've been having some questions about four on four rally ball and a little more clarification on that stream within the early contact. Recreational membership is required for all athletes that are participating in four V four rally ball. So they will be required to upgrade if they plan on playing in any of the other streams within early contact. But if you're just playing four on four, alls we need is a recreational membership. So there will be referees provided, we're still needling out whether we're going to have supervisor referees or we will have court referees. So that's still, we are leaning towards court referees. We are going to have a soft uniform policy for the, for all tournaments within four on four. So just making sure they have numbers and that's it. And, you know, just making sure that we're reducing those barriers to get athletes on the court. We are going to try to keep tournaments as regional as possible. Just a reminder, Ontario is a very big province and we have lots of land to cover. So depending on the registered teams, Caitlin and Mark will do their amazing work and make sure that they find you a tournament that's as close as you could possible. This is a great stream for house leagues to transition into a more competitive feel of volleyball. So, you know, if you have that 12 week house league program and then there's a four on four volleyball tournament that you guys want to play in, come on in. We'd love to have you. So it's a great stepping stone for that. And just to note, four V four rally ball, we don't have any eligibility requirements for Ontario championships. So, which is great. And we will be offering male coed division as well as female for this just because we have very limited number of our younger boys playing the sport. And we really want to make sure that if some smaller communities only have four boys out and they want to fill out their roster and they can fill that with four other girls, that we can do it. So that's why we have that male and coed division happening for four on four rally ball.
Carrie, we had a quick question. This is about the soft uniform policy for, just clarification around the numbers. Do we need front and back, just front, just back?
I think we would just go with a number on one side. Obviously, we want to reduce the barriers for this entry level as best as possible. And that's why we do have the reduced membership fee. That's why we do have flexibility with your venue requirements. So because it is a smaller part court that we require, you know, you do have the option of using a badminton court if that, that's possible. So yeah, if you want to have full uniforms, absolutely. We all know that kids love to get their kit at the beginning of the season and things like that. That's a real selling point for them, but it's not mandatory. So if you are using the coed, just as long as it's numbered, large enough and easy enough for an official to find them and follow them on the court, then that's perfect.
And I think too, just to reiterate that point, if these teams are going to be playing and transitioning through TI, so they may do two tournaments of four on four and then go to six on six rally ball. They would need to have the traditional form of the front and back. So just keep that.
So I don't know if everybody caught that because I didn't with, because Alicia was breaking in and out. So Alicia was just mentioning that four on four rally ball is the only age division that will have a soft uniform policy for all of the tournaments. So if you do wish to play in a six on six, then you would need to look at up in the uniform situation. Okay, Ontario championship reminders. This year, we have two locations. This will be our first year running two locations. So we will have four events beginning Easter weekend and wrapping up on May 1st at Rim Park in Waterloo. And then we will be at the Paramount Fine Food Center in Mississauga for three events beginning Thursday, April 21st and wrapping up May 1st again. So those are our two locations. We are working on assigning locations in age divisions. So please stay tuned. Teams are permitted to play in multiple Ontario championships, provided they're not playing six days in a row. So that was just the same as previous years and keeping in mind that we do have two tournament locations as well. So that, I know it's tricky. Please, we'll do our best to make sure that we're giving, playing opportunities equally across the board. Athletes can be listed on one roster per event. We are looking at releasing our age splits in early November. We do, are going to continue to have a state of play hotel booking process. And that will be released in November as well with the age divisions. And we are currently reviewing the OC's travel rebate that was traditionally given out. So more to come on that in the fall. So stay tuned. Lots of fun updates. Okay, so here we are, membership and club fees. So we all know that everybody needs to register prior to a tryout. Yep, so that means every athlete attending a tryout needs to go on MRS and create a profile. It's absolutely free, but it's absolutely important that they get those waivers signed off on and that they show proof that they've done this at your tryout. And that can just be you flashing your phone in front of your person, taking your, checking off your attendance at your tryouts just to know that that has actually been done. So our recreational player, four V four athlete is OVA fee of $7, VC fee of five. So you're looking at under 13 bucks for a four on four player. Competitive players, so that's for, sorry, six V six rally ball to 19U. We have a dollar increase at 85.11. And just to make note, if that recreational player wants to play in the 16, or the six V six, they are going to need to top up their membership fee upgrade. So you have your club contact, team contact, coach, any type of leader within your organization is 85.11. Returning club fee is 250 and then your new club fee is 500. So these are brand new clubs wishing to join the association and all plus HST. Okay, and tournament entry fees. So here we are, four V four rally ball regular season. So we're looking at $165 for your four V four. This is all plus HST. So just to, a little reminder. And then we are looking at a, I'm going to make a point just about the four V four before I move on, not to prolong this or anything. So your team of, in rally ball can consist of, you know, 10 to eight, 10, eight, whatever athletes. You are permitted to split that roster for your tournaments. So that 165 is per team. So that's for that. Six on six V six rally ball to 15U regular season, 15U regular season events are 335. 16 to 18U regular season, single day events are 350. And then we got our two day events for those upper age divisions at 575. Ontario championships for rally ball is only two days and we are going for 830 for those. And then we are looking at six V six to 15U Ontario championships, three days, 1230. And then our older kids, 16 to 18U at 1330. And these are all pending board approval.
Sorry, Carrie, thanks for that. Just really quick question going back before we turn it over to Donna quickly. Just regarding the tryout player membership roles, I know Sherry is going to touch on it later as well. But just, there were some questions surrounding what happens if someone comes to tryouts and they're not in the system. Do you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, so it's really important that we get those waivers filled out, guys. It's the law. Considering that we do have Rowan's Law in Ontario and that every provincial organization is responsible for ensuring that these are aware of this. So I'm not sure, phones are wonderful to have around. The fee is free. You don't have to pay anything. So if somebody shows up to your, your tryout and they haven't done this, kindly just remind them to hop online, register on MRS and then you're happy to take them. So, or even maybe if you're able to have a device, whether it's an iPad or something at your check-in, making sure that, you know, it has connectivity and you can ask, you know, have that available for them as well. But it has to be done. So yeah, my advice is just to make sure you have somebody with data mobile nearby. It doesn't cost anything. It takes a few minutes to do and it'll save you a heart, a possible long heartache in the future. Did I answer it? Okay.
Carrie, there's just a question about the fees for four on four.
Yes.
If you split your team into two, two teams of four, is that 165 per group of four?
Per group of four, yes.
All right. So now we're going to, thank you very much, Carrie, for that. Now we're going to pass the mic on over to Donna to run us through some Volleyball Canada updates.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Welcome. And I say welcome back with much, much joy. We are very excited to see volleyball return and especially after the month that we've just had glued to our TVs watching our Olympic athletes perform. It's been exciting, well, two months now, I guess, with the ANL having the opportunity to watch our women compete there as well. So I'm going to go through this really quickly. LP said I had three minutes. So cup approval process. So this is brand new for Volleyball Canada. We are so excited. This is, I'm going to say 10 years in the making. We are asking and requiring that every club registers with their provincial association. But we've set a standard across Canada. So every club in Canada has the opportunity to be an approved club within their provincial association. Each province is a little bit different and have different requirements. But Volleyball Canada has really set, set the standard in the questions that we're asking and what we're wanting, wanting from, wanting from our club. Really, the entire goal with the club approval at this stage is that every club that operates in Canada within Volleyball Canada and our provincial associations is providing a safe, quality sport experience for every person participating, athlete, coach, parent. And really, it's the start of an education process. Through this, we will be continuing to develop resources for those, for those clubs. So that really is what it's about. In terms of how it will operate within Ontario is a little bit different because Ontario is, uses a different registration system than we will be using. But we're working on that. So that information will be coming out shortly. Volleyball Canada is using a system, Sport Lomo is the name of the product. And it will be a registration system. BC is actually already using this system. So we've, that's been a good process. Really, the focus is on membership registration with credentials tied to each member. So for all of those people, code tracking, safe sport training, the mandatory requirements, the system is, the goal will be that the system captures this for us. And we're working obviously with OVA to make that happen as seamlessly as possible between the registration system that OVA uses as well as Volleyball Canada. And really, that will be our focus for our program and our event registration as well. So the club approval process will be that a member, a president or somebody, whoever's responsible for the club, if they don't refer to themselves as a president, will register as a member and ensure that they have the credentials. Certainly, the two priority ones are criminal record check as well as their safe sport training. And OVA may have other ones that they require. And the club sanctioning piece, so the club approval will only be available to the club president, to the club leader, asking very general questions. It should take a club president about 10 to 15 minutes to fill this out. And it's just really gathering general club information, governance, what type of club are you running? What does that look like? Your board of directors? Who is your board of directors? Who do you have as people in authority within your club? And then really the next piece of it is safe sport training, so and safe sport education. And then really the next piece of it is uh, safe sport training, uh, so and safe sport education, do you have? Um, a um, do you have the safe sport um, hotline uh, on your website? It's a quick yes or no, uh, the whole present purpose of that is to educate um, you on. Things that we expect our clubs to have, um, and screening policies uh, within your persons and authority. Um, are you going through uh, the proper um, proper procedures and and channels to ensure that that is done, um, done well? And then um, obviously our policies and procedures, uh, that you know what uh, what they are, where they are, how you find them. And um, a lot of work has been done uh, within volleyball in Canada, um, to have what we refer to as um, Pan-Canadian policies. So these policies um, are volleyball Canada policies, but um, every um, we. In every jurisdiction is aware of them and and signing uh, off onto them, so. Then uh, we go into coach education, who's the person responsible for your coach education within your club? Um, as well as information on uh, coach eligibility for national championships, uh, so that the club president is aware. Um, and it's a check, again, a check mark that you have read that policy and are aware of it. Um, and then just a check mark uh, for good standing, are you in good standing? Um, and then uh, will the final piece is uh, best practices, what what makes a great club? Um, and not from a athlete perspective, but from a governance perspective, and that's really where we would like to focus some energy. On ensuring that um, is a safe um, positive experience for everyone. So that's really club approval in a nutshell, um, for nationals, uh, the age categories, thank you for touching on that. Um, so the volleyball Canada, we um, had approved a policy that we didn't get to use, um, so we will continue that policy. Where two athletes uh, born uh, January to August thirty-first, um, of that nineteen U age group. Um, will be eligible for national championships if they are not part of a um, a program, a post-secondary program. Um, but after there's, we will continue with our sixteen month um, age categories, so um. Anybody born September to through to the following, however, um, is uh, we are non-restricted. So that is our policy and that will be up on our website if it's not already. Um, LTD, we've been working really hard uh, to get that um, up and published, uh, it's been a work in progress. And uh, we're close into the edit stage, um, we're looking forward to sharing that with everyone, um, we were really lucky to work with um. Some uh, people within OVA to to ensure that that uh, we continue to build that um, product and and that publication. Out so that it was more manageable for uh, everyone to understand and to really um. Be able to apply the principles that uh, that we all um, know are are true for our um, for our long-term uh, development. Nationals, um, we can't wait, uh, we are back and uh, back and up and running. Um, those dates have been released, um, and if you have any questions regarding nationals, please, uh, you know, our our events team is. Is ready to go, um, and uh, and onboard. And um, I just am reading the on the screen here, um. I, if you regarding any letters of good standing, that um, would be, we'd have to, I'd have to look into that because I don't have information um, on hand there. Uh, if anyone has any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to to us, um. Certainly me, um, I I'm happy to answer any emails, I won't be staying um, on the call, so, um, but I will. Be happy to answer and I'm really glad to see um, this group coming together and moving forward and not to, not to held up. For any, any longer, so um, I'm just trying to read the questions as they're coming in here. Um, we do define what um, a post-secondary uh, program is, um, within our age category. And I do not believe it does not include, um, it does not include intramurals if I read that really quickly, um, as I'm trying to speak. So, does anyone, uh, is anyone from OVA, do you wanna, if there's questions there, I can certainly answer them?
No other questions, that's all you got?
Um, club approval, um, OVA is a little bit ahead of all the rest of the um, provinces, so. Uh, that is already started in your province, so this year will be a little bit of a uh, transition in that. Uh, what we've actually talked about is that clubs that have been approved by OVA, um, we will um, upload them. Or or get a copy of those clubs and um, be able to uh, just approve those clubs uh, manually, I'll say. Um, within our um, jurisdiction within volleyball Canada uh, for this coming season.
So Donna, just to clarify even more, that means that our clubs and members don't have to do anything different. Than what they already know, uh, you know, to do with their club form. And then just registering as members and making sure that you have your coach eligibility.
Right.
Uh, modules, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, uh, but yeah, there's no extra step uh, on your end. Um, will, our staff will talk with volleyball Canada and then make sure that uh, volleyball Canada gets the information from us, uh, once. Yeah, once you complete all that stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this is across Canada, um, and that um, we are um. Certainly uh, very excited to to have sort of a universal structure um, across all our clubs. So that everyone is really um, on the same page when it comes to um, the club approval process.
Perfect, one more question did come up, um, just regarding IE for college, so if a female soccer player. For Fanshawe is playing, can they play volleyball in like a OVA or VC event or championship?
Yeah, I haven't had that question before, but I would suggest that the answer would be yes, because they're not on a volleyball roster, they're not training in that sport, so. I can't see that um, we would ever have uh, any um, issue with that. And not only that, we wouldn't, I don't know that we'd have to have a mechanism in place to be able to verify that, so. Um, I don't think we want to go verifying every, every athlete in that is in that age group, whether we we want to stick to our sport, so.
Perfect, thanks so much, Donna, thank you for taking your time to come and talk to us. Now we're going to just pass it along to Joanne, I believe.
Yes, thank you, thanks Donna. Um, so to continue on with Donna's um, discussion around Pan-Canadian policies. Um, the screening policy is one of those. So I just wanted to um, bring to your attention that there is a, an updated OVA screening policy. It is aligned with volleyball Canada, it's part of the Pan-Canadian suite of of policies. So um, there's a, there's a, a couple of um, just updates that I just wanted to to highlight here, so. We have um, now the ability to do the, the police record checks. Um, the enhanced police record checks on my back check online. So that's great, so um, you can now do that online, so when your three years are up and you don't have to go do the paper copy. You can go and use my back check. Um, there is also the screening disclosure form, um, it is in Formstack with Oakland and I'll let him share that piece. But um, the one thing that I I wanted to also identify was that there's a high risk and a low risk. So the the high risk is what we would normally have is like, yeah, you gotta get screened, you gotta do your police record check, you gotta do your screen disclosure form. Um, in that, just make sure that you're including your club executives. Um, anyone that's involved with um, finance, frequent or unsupervised supervised access to your vulnerable and. Vulnerable, vulnerable individuals, so anyone that on a regular basis is volunteering for you and supervising the athletes. Um, so they may be a manager, a parent, um, but you use them in a supervisory role. They may, they may be that other um, parent that you used to help coach that second team on the four V four, uh, something like that, just make sure you. Um, also complete their screening. Um, if you ever ha- if you have any athlete support personnel, any strength and conditioning contractors. Uh, that that, you know, help the athletes directly, um, make sure they're screened. So the, those are the two requirements with the screening disclosure form and the my ba- my back check. If you have individuals that. They may occasionally be used to be supervisory, you have a parent, um, another volunteer, they just need to complete your, the screening disclosure form. Um, they don't have to go into my back check and and do the police record check, but but uh, they should be submitting their screen disclosure form. Um, and yeah, that would also include like, potential, your team managers. Um, they, or if there's not, um, it's just, it's more of a, a, an informal uh, connection that they have. Um, to the individuals, but um, the policy does require that you have them complete uh, screens closure form. Uh, that is available on the Formstack. Um, I'm gonna jump to the screen before Oakland gives us any other updates. The, the next slide there, Caitlin. Thanks, um. So I think I already covered that piece off, okay, I knew we wanted to keep moving. Um, so that is the um, the piece of the, of the screening policy. Um, so the cost of my back check, Calvin, you can run that off, I know. Um, because I don't know, I don't know, I can't remember it off the top of my head, um, and the uh, there is the um. The piece that Oakland will give more information, I believe it's in the coach eligibility piece. Um, so I will go to the, to the rule of two, if there's no questions on the screening policy.
Sorry, Joe, really quick, Calvin, the cost of uh, my back check?
Yeah, I think it's about twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents or something close to that. But less than going to the actual police station to get your police check.
Yes, and then it's there and then you have your report and that's very helpful and it's really quick. Um, so, so I just wanted to also provide a little bit of an update on the rule of two, because there was some questions that came in. And there was um, there's a document Caitlin will post it in the chat, so there was some different scenarios that came up. About, well, what should we do in this scenario? What should we do in this scenario? So we just put it in um, that document so you can go through. But just on an overall uh, basis of it, obviously the little green check mark there that you have two straight, trained and screened coaches with. With, if there's ever one athlete, that is your ideal scenario. Um, if you do get, you do get into some scenarios where you may have one trained screen coach, always try to have another adult. Um, around that screen, so if you know you get into those scenarios. How, you can have a parent in that, in that team that is also screened, that can also be around if that other assistant coach can't make it. Or they're um, they're in that scenario where you have gyms that are separate, or you have a, another contractor coming to work. Um, with the athletes in another space and you can send that parent over to also supervise, just keep those, try to plan ahead for some of those scenarios. And potentially screen, um, you know, another adult uh, to to accompany the athletes. Um, so that's just something that, um, as we, as you look down the, the little steps. Um, when you get to those scenarios, always try to modify, and if you can't meet the green check mark, you just look. You look to the scenario of, okay, how can we put another adult injected into this scenario? Or I'm gonna send two athletes with that coach, so always stay away from the one-on-one and then just keep moving up the steps. And we'll post that. Um. And.
Sorry, before JoJo, before we go into rule of two, there's just more questions, I think some confusion around my back check. Um, so Calvin, if you don't mind just hopping in and kind of explaining the process, there's some confusion that it's tied into MRS, which it's not right now. So kind of just explain the steps and what clubs still need to do for their police screening for the coaches and all that fun stuff, that would be great.
Yep, so MRS is our registration system, um, it's the old or it's the new and what was previously the NRS. My back check uh, is not related to MRS and it's a different website. So um, there's a link where people can sign up for an account and then they can apply for a police check online. Uh, they pay for it uh, with their credit card and then they have their identity verified. Um, and then the results are sent back to them. Uh, and then the police check can either be downloaded as a PDF and emailed to whoever you. Whoever needs a copy, so it can be sent to the OVA, can be sent to like your school or. Other, like soccer teams or uh, wherever else you need to share your police check with. Um, and, or, and can be shared with the OVA directly through your account. Uh, there was another question about the vulnerable sector, so yeah, if you have a vulnerable sector check that is completed within the last three years, it's still valid. Um, so you don't need to do the my back check yet.
Now, one other updated, sorry, Alicia, one other update with policy is that, um, is. In the my back check, you can do the enhanced police um, check, which doesn't, then you aren't required to do the uh, VSS.
Perfect, and in terms of the process, when you share um. Uh, your, your, my back check results with the person at your club that's responsible for tracking all of the screening for your coaches and club staff. Um, basically they just keep that on file, so then when they go in and create the club and MRS, I think maybe this is where some of the confusion is. The club contact, when they fill out their club form and they enter all of the club staff, there's just the box there where you check that they have their. Police check completed, so that's where you would go in, um, and you don't have to upload anything regarding the PSS or. They enhance screening through my back check for the OVA, um, really it's for you guys to track at the club level and when you enter your club form, that info is captured there. Alright, LP, you're up.
Good evening, um, so. Coach eligibility policy mentioned it briefly when uh, when Donna was uh, was on the call. So as uh, a lot of you are aware, there's been some changes, uh, the coach eligibility policy changed last year, but. Because of the year we had, uh, last year, I think a lot of people didn't. Weren't aware of the change, just because they didn't sign up, for example, so. This year, everybody's signing back uh, as members to be able to um, enjoy the indoor season, so that's awesome. But just so you know, um, all coaches this year will have to have certain modules completed before they can sign up as members. And before they can participate in events, so the changes that were made to the coach certification policy. Which used to require coaches to have certain certification done by OCs. Uh, was changed to an eligibility, eligibility policy that actually. Uh, simply focuses on uh, safe and responsible coaching. And um, that also requires which is to have all of the checks, you know, completed. Before they actually step on the, on, on court, not at the very end of the season before their last event. So that's one big change, now you will see that the requirements are easily. Uh, I guess easy to complete online, at any time, they are available online, so um. Again, very simple for all your coaches to complete that, uh, it's, it's actually very quick as well to complete, so. When I'm talking about a couple of days or a couple of weekends here, which was a, a comment that we had in the past. So um, I don't know Caitlin, if you're able to click on that link in uh. Sorry, I just, are you still there? Lost my screen. Hello, hello, oh, you're back. Is this working for you, Caitlin?
Can you see the coach eligibility policy?
Now, can you see it?
Yep, I'm on it right now.
Okay.
Okay, should I stop sharing and then share again?
Maybe you just need to share that other window, maybe it opened in a different window?
It opened in the internet, yes, so do I? Stop sharing, share again, I'll do that. Okay.
I don't know why it does that and why it's have to kind of shift back and forth. That's weird, okay, so um. The mandatory eligibility requirements for all coaches, all people registered as coaches. So head coaches, assistant coaches, uh, technical directors, uh, anyone essentially who is gonna be in touch uh, in contact with athletes. Needs to obviously have the screening, we talked about this, Joanne talked about it, but you also have to complete the making headway module. And the Coaches Association of Canada Safe Sports Training, that's the one that uh, Donna was previously referring to. Uh, when she talked about all of the volleyball Canada stuff. Uh, so everyone should have those two, now, uh, head coaches and club technical directors must also have the additional. Foundations of volleyball and making ethical decisions online evaluation. Uh, training, so those two have a cost, if the first two are actually free. Uh, but those second, uh, the foundations of volleyball and making ethical decisions online evaluation have a, a, a small cost associated to them. Now, um, we know that a lot of coaches, the majority actually of coaches have. Completed those because they've been part of the certification requirements for many years now. Uh, but just make sure that you uh, you speak to your newer coaches. Uh, and those who may not have completed them before, uh, to 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 make sure they have that, so. Uh, very important to complete that before, as soon as possible. Ideally, right, right now, our system doesn't allow us to actually make sure that you have completed that before you register, so. You may have some uh, coaches register already as members who have not completed, completed, completed these steps. Uh, just work with them to make sure they do, because uh, essentially. Uh, if they are flagged as not having those, they won't be able to uh, participate in, in the events, even if they're signed up for them. So, uh, very important uh, stuff to do now, just an extra step here, uh, Caitlin. Can you please click on uh, the link? Can you please click on uh, the link at the top there about the screening disclosure form? Okay, so that link is there, the policy, um, and I think John mentioned it. But um, for the screening disclosure form, instead of completing that PDF that you're used to, this year it's gonna be completable online through a uh, form like this one. And uh, and what happens specifically for coaches is once you um, fill up all this information and click the uh, coach box at the bottom there in what's your role? It actually will, uh, once you click next, take you to a page that lists all of this policy and lists all of the stuff that you need to uh, to have. So you can actually double check as an individual if you have if you have everything. Now, I think um, we have Oakland on the call and I'd love for him to actually speak to the process of how he's actually going to use information in this form that you are gonna complete to then check in with you club contacts uh, and make sure that you are aware of uh, all of your coaches' status.
Uh, thanks OP. Uh, hi everyone. Um, so as far as the form itself, just like OP explained, um, before it used to be done through PDF printed and scanned and then uh, sent back to the clubs. One of the things that maybe we came across was the fact that sometimes it's left unanswered or it wasn't completed or questions were missed. So um, that's why we decided to move with it online um, and make it easier to complete and track. Um, as far as the process, the form itself is um, exactly the same as it was before. Uh, it was just asking a few extra information that will help um, will help us with the audit uh, when we do the club forms. So the deadline to submit the club form, I believe is September twenty second for this year. Uh, up until then, coaches can start beginning or can start, yeah, can start filling out uh, their screening form on Formstack. And any club contact or club admin can reach out to me to ask if um, if their coaches have done it uh, already or if they want an update as to who's missing it, who hasn't done it. Um, this is done so when club contacts are completing their club form, they can check off on the box that says um, you know, this, this coach has completed their screening form. Um, so these submissions will go straight to us and we'll keep them on file. However, it is recommended that the club also does keep a file of um, or or a copy of the document on uh, for their records as well. But we will be able to share with them like the date that it was, that was completed on. Um, after September twenty second, after that um, club form deadline, we'll actually be going through uh, an audit for all of the clubs. And what we'll be doing is we'll be comparing, I guess, the information that submitted on the club form and checking it with the information or the list of coaches that have submitted the screening form. Uh, checking it with the coaches that are registered on MRS and checking it with the uh, their police check dates. Um, so we'll be checking all of these, making sure that the information is up to date and I'll be following up with every single club um, to let them know uh, and give them an audit result where, where they stand, who's missing, who's missing what. Um, but prior to the uh, September twenty second deadline, they can reach out to me if they um, just wanna get ahead with um, with a club form and ask if all of their coaches, if all of their coaches have completed or if they're um, they can ask about somebody specifically. And I believe
Do you want me to go back to the PowerPoint now?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks Oakland. Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I think I saw a question. Yeah, Oakland, do we know where our clubs can find this form?
So the form is on the, I know it's listed on our um, screening page, which I'll post the link on the in the chat. And I know that the link is also on the coach eligibility uh, document. Which I believe is under the OVA slash coaches. And I will post both of those links in the chat right now.
Thanks Oakland. So that's for um, that's for the the screening form. So uh, thanks for walking us through that. Now, real quick to finish on coach eligibility. If you are in the new stream of four on four rally ball and you are splitting your team into rosters and for example, you do not have you know, you have an assistant coach who did not complete the uh, foundations of volleyball and making ethical decisions online evaluation modules, um, such as what is required for the head coach. Uh, but they are going to be the head coach of that second team once you split. Uh, nothing to worry about as long as one coach for the two rosters at that event is uh, is meeting the requirements uh, and has met the head coach eligibility requirements, uh, you will be fine. Okay, so uh, no problem with that. Just make sure that one of the two coaches is actually a head coach that meets the head coach requirements. Now, I got a message, a direct message in a chat about coaching certification. Um, and about development coach versus advanced development coach. So for this policy, um, we're not looking at dev coach or advanced dev coach certification, but if you're planning on going to nationals, that will be something that you want to uh, take a look at. And you can actually go on volleyball Canada's website to find their nationals certification policy. The volleyball Canada does require your training in either um, the development coach stream or the advanced dev uh, stream, depending on uh, on the age of the team that you coach. Okay, so just make sure if you go on nationals that you are aware of the volleyball Canada um, requirements. I think we can move on. Lastly, just wanted to mention the Coach Academy. For those who did not hear about it last year, this is a platform that we launched last year. We had a bunch of um, resources to help clubs and coaches get back in the gym when uh, stuff started to open back in the fall before everything closed again. Um, and this is a great platform where um, you can actually share some of your own resources and go and get some information and access some resources and tools posted by other coaches and by uh, some of our OVA mentor coaches and 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 staff and Team Ontario coaches as well. So um, we're talking about drills, uh, skills, videos, all sorts of things. We have uh, recording of webinars. We also have events that are going to be posted there. So everything that we're gonna do that has to do with coach development this year is going to be on there. So it's very simple for you to get access to this. If you are a coach member of the OVA, so if you register as a coach, you automatically have access to the Coach Academy. Now you do have to click on the link that's sent to you. So um, if you are new, okay, a new member this year or you were not a member of the Coach Academy this past year, um, you will be sent a link and then you can get access to uh, to the Coach Academy. Now, just for those who are uh, who were already on it this past year, so those who had already accessed the Coach Academy, we are going to do the roll over on October first. So if you register as a coach member by October first and you were on a Coach Academy, there will be no uh, effect to your membership. So you will just keep having access to the Coach Academy website uh, normally. Uh, but if you're not in our system in MRS by October first and you were in a Coach Academy this past year, then you will be removed. And then you will have to go through the process of um, getting access again by becoming a member of the OVA. Uh, and then you'll get the invitation. So uh, everyone who is a member as of October first, a coach member of the OVA will have access to the Coach Academy. Uh, there will be uh, also a bunch of resources placed there with regards to the early contact initiative. Such as um, practice um, seasonal plan templates and uh, other tools to help coaches navigate this new, these new streams. So uh, stay tuned for for that. And uh, and and you see at the bottom of the screen here is is the uh, URL for the Coach Academy. So if you wanna go uh, check it out, feel free to do so.
Sorry, just before we jump into Sherry with the membership registration info, there's a few more questions just to have screening really quickly. Um, just regarding anyone under eighteen, if they're coaching, do they need to have their police checks done? Um, no, because they're under eighteen, they're minors, they don't have anything on file that we could see. Um, and assistance coaches, yes, they would still, everyone needs to have their PRC. So anyone that's working with minors in the association at the club level would need to have their um, police check on file.
Alright, yeah. Caitlin, did you want? Nope, you're good. Okay, um, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to see you guys or not see, but have you guys on the call tonight. Um, I'm gonna go through some membership stuff. So let's get started with that. The new season um, for MRS starts on September first. So my recommendation for registering on MRS, if you have a Gmail account, I would use it. If you don't, I would create one. It's the easiest way to uh, to uh, be registered on the, on the MRS. Um, with Gmail account, you know, when parents say, why can't I register my child under one email address? Well, you can with a Gmail account. So for example, if I'm a coach with a club and I have two kids playing, I can register myself through my Gmail account. I can also register my son or daughter using the same email address, but before the at symbol, you put plus one. So if my email is sherrybennett06@gmail.com, I can register my son or daughter with the same email address, sherrybennett06+1@gmail.com. My next child could be sherrybennett06+2@gmail.com, et cetera, et cetera. Up until um, five people with the same email address. Um, with the email addresses, you cannot have underscores, unfortunately. Um, it's just the system won't allow it. It's old school. So no underscores in the email. Excellent. Alright, so returning club registration um, and club form information. So before club contacts can go in and fill out the returning club form, they have to register themselves in MRS. So you go to the website, enter in your name and email and then you'll get a registration link. Um, click that link and then um, it will ask you to fill out your profile information. Sign off on any waivers and Rowan's Law, anything like that. And then MRS will take you to the role selection page where you'll select club contact. And then uh, pay the full eighty five dollars and eleven cents. And then once you've done that, once you've registered as a club contact, um, you'll be able to go to your homepage in MRS and on the left-hand side under quick links, which is what that picture is on your screen there, um, you'll see returning club form. So if you just click on that, the returning club form will come up. Um, all information is collected electronically versus PDFs in the past. So for this upcoming season, the returning club form will be auto-populated with information from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season. So the club contact will only have to go in and update the form. So um, edits can be made for the duration of the, of the, of the season. So if you need to come out and then go back in, you can do that as well. At the bottom of the returning club form, um, there will be like a place where you have to sign off on all the waivers, including the COVID nineteen acknowledgement form. Please make sure that your club forms are submitted by September twenty second or the certificate of insurance might not be um, valid or it could be taken away. So if you wanna practice, submit your club form. Alright, so first and foremost, all athletes need to register their own profile in MRS, like we said earlier this evening, um, to sign off on any waivers and the Rowan's Law prior to trying out for a club. So athletes that are currently registered in MRS for this season, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season, do not need to register as a trial player. They've already signed all their waivers, so they don't need to, to create a new profile or anything like that. The rec player should be fine to show um, when you go to the trial. Prior to September first, any new members that were not currently in MRS, they are the ones that are gonna have to go on and create a new profile and register as a trial player um, for the free membership. These new members, um, they'll, their membership will be carried over into September first. So when September first hits, like they don't have to go back to MRS and recreate a new profile. They'll already be in the system. However, they will need to upgrade their membership to a rec player prior to their first team's practice. Um, club practices, yeah, so when the, when it's the first club practice, you'll have to upgrade from trial player to rec. And you can keep your recreational player membership until the first um, OVA competition. And then it says there, um, for four on four rally ball, you'll only need the rec player for the, for the season. Every other division, you'll need to upgrade to that competitive player. So this, the first two points there, just go over what I just said about upgrading to a rec player. You have to pay the twelve ninety-one before any on-court activities. And then um, upgrading to a competitive membership um, when the first OVA competition. Similar to NRS, if clubs wanna pay for the athlete fees, they can do that. Um, when you go to your team section after you've registered your club, um, you'll be able to search for, for the member um, through the team section and then they'll come up, you press select and then a list of roles will come up. And then that's when you select rec or competitive player, whichever one that you're paying for. Um, the how-to guides will be online with, using that link on your screen um, before the end of the week. Coaches and club staff must also register themselves in the MRS. Um, they also have to sign off on any um, waivers and Rowan's Law. So they have to pay the full eighty-five eleven. Same thing, if a club wants to pay for the coaches and club execs' membership, they can register as a volunteer. Um, it's the free membership. And then when the club contact goes to add them to a team, same way you just search for the member, they'll come up and then the list of roles will show. And that's when you click head coach, assistant coach, indoor team contact, whichever one you uh, you wanna pay for there. And then that note at the bottom there, full membership is required for coaches and club staff prior to any on-court activities, which includes tryouts. So just make sure that you have that, that full membership there before you step on the court. Insurance certificates, um, yeah, so they're sent to me at that email, insurance@OntarioVolleyball.org. Some of you already have been sending um, insurance requests. So I send, you send the insurance request form to me and then I send it to the insurance broker. They do their thing and then send it back to me and then I'll send it to you guys. Um, for some of you that have already received your certificate, you may notice that it covers till October thirty-first. When the new policy gets in effect, um, I will automatically send the certificates of insurance back to the insurance company. They'll extend it to the dates that they cover and then I will send it back to you guys automatically. So you won't have to worry about resubmitting the insurance request form or anything like that. Um, as always, if you have any questions, you can give me a call or send me an email. Any specific questions about insurance, you can send it to myself or Jen um, using that email there. I know a lot of information was just thrown out, you guys. So at any point, give me a call, I'll be happy to help you guys out.
Thanks, Sherry. So I will just keep this rolling. Um, so with the uh, I just wanted to do an update on return to play protocols. Carrie touched on them. Um, and as she said, I'm just gonna reiterate, reiterate it, it's step three. And as she said, I'm just going to reiterate it. It's step three. So planned for that. Make sure you have a safety plan. It is unknown when we'll enter the roadmap exit step, as they call it. We do know that we have to get more vaccinations happening across the province. So and obviously numbers need to stay good. So just plan for the the step three, making sure you have your safety plan. Because even from what I've read in the regulations, as they're starting to document the roadmap exit step, it still has a safety plan in it. So and mask usage. So it's 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 because obviously it's going to be indoor. It's not really going to be much different. And if it eventually eases up even more, that'll be fantastic. So just keep in mind to check with your local public health, your facility. Make sure you've posted the capacity limits. You have your safety response plan. You've posted it. Your return to play protocols are posted online and of course, wear masks, keep physical distance, all that fun stuff. And I'm going to talk a little bit about vaccinations and just expand on some questions that we've been getting. So as we said, the OVA is not, it's not mandatory for participation in OVA programming and events to be vaccinated. So we got, we get questions of can clubs mandate it? We've discussed it with legal. We've we've got some feedback. There, obviously, COVID is, we don't need to go into the details of it. It is, there is a health and safety risk. The sport, we do engage in a very interactive activity. Therefore, to keep individuals safe, you can ask, but then you have to be prepared. You have to be prepared to then, how are you going to keep their personal health information confidential? There's a requirement that you're collecting it safely, that you've kept it secured, that you've properly destroyed it after there's no longer any use for it. So there's challenges that you have to to consider along with the administrative burden. And what then would you do if they refused to provide their health information? What would be your club's response? How are you going to figure out where there's exemptions or exceptions? So you would have to decide on what those accommodations would be. How would you handle them? How are you going to deal with the fact that a lot of society isn't requiring them? And then just be careful because it could create some bullying situations. So 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 just keep in mind that those are challenges. And then also some facilities are requiring it. So keep in mind that too, as far as like, if you have a facility around that, they may require it, private facility, then that's something that you would have to make sure that you would that you would have that in place. So I just wanted to give that little update on there that that is just to confirm the, at this time, the OVA is not mandating it. And I also wanted to highlight, just if, once you get into return to play and you've been updating and looking at the screening questions, you will see that if if someone is vaccinated, they can still clear some of the screening and participate. For example, if 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 I'm answering my screening questions and I have been in close contact, but I'm fully vaccinated, I can still answer no and then come to practice, right? So so those are things that are really to be an incentive to get your vaccine, to be able to continue to participate and continue on. So there's a number of questions in the screening that does provide the opportunity to to answer no if you're fully vaccinated. So just keep that in mind as well. And I think I have one more slide, Caitlin, after this. Oh, two, actually. Okay, so policy update. So we had the screening policy that was updated and I just wanted to to put this up there, up here so you're aware. We did have a heavy policy review. Volleyball Canada released that Pan-Canadian suite of policies. We have adopted a number of them and as a general, because being a recognized sport organization by the ministry, on an ongoing basis, we review and update our policies. So some of these, it's a review, not a lot of changes, which would be the anti doping, accessibility. We have a diversity, equity and inclusion policy now, and we're going to continue on and have a few policies underneath of there. Our trans inclusion policy was previous, our transgender athlete policy. The nice thing now is this one is consistent with Volleyball Canada and across the the country now. There's a reciprocation that's a requirement with Volleyball Canada and privacy. So they're on our website. If you ever have any questions on them, just, you know, send us an email, let us know. And the one upcoming is our concussion policy. So Rowan's Law came in in two phases. So the first phase was having these resources, the sign off of the resources prior to membership. That's why we're so so I think you've heard it throughout the presentation, we need that acknowledgement and those that sign off in the system prior to someone becoming a member, that is the law. So that's why I know we've been harping on it, but it's just important to realize that it is part of Rowan's Law. And that's why we're so, we keep repeating it and try to make sure that that's done in the system. The next phase that comes into effect is January twenty twenty two, Rowan's Law. And that is that there is a return to play a protocol that is required. So in our current policy, we have return to play and links to resources and it's recommended. Now we're going to have to update that to be required and we will in the fall circulate the return to play protocol that will be required from Rowan's Law. So we don't have actually the resources, the ministry hasn't provided those to us yet. But once we do get them, we will get them circulated and have another update on that. I wanted to slide this in. So I did, I think I thought it was a really good opportunity to have our club contacts, our our club executives here, just to let, you know, where we are with the governance review that we've been working on, our government, our governance committee that has some of our board members and a volunteer from their community, has been in the process of revising our OVA bylaws. So why? It's not a very exciting project, but why we need to? Because we do need to be in compliance with the Ontario Not-for-Profit Corporations Act that will come into play very soon. And also, the other piece is the Canadian Sport Governance Code is another compliance piece that Volleyball Canada has to follow. So all the NSOs are going to have to follow and then in turn that pushes down to the to the PSO. So OVA is going to have to follow as well the case for governance code and their compliance with this is by December twenty twenty two. So where are we in the process of of drafting and revising our OVA bylaws? We are currently reviewing a draft with our regional presidents. It does impact a change in the regions. So and we're also going to be discussing it tomorrow night with regional executives and getting some feedback and reviewing. It's under legal review as well. We're waiting for some feedback on that. And then our board will have a review and look at it by the end of the month. So our plan is in September to to start getting the feedback, questions and it really is getting through and sharing the proposed changes and rationale with our membership in September. It'll also be posted on the website. So I just wanted to give the heads up on that is that that information is going to be coming out in September and that we do need to hold our region AGMs a little bit earlier to then vote in our regional delegates, to then hold a special meeting to vote on these proposed bylaw amendments prior to the next AGM. So that's just some timelines to keep in mind. Obviously, governance isn't the most exciting thing, but it's pretty exciting that we're some of the changes that are coming down for the bylaws. Thank you.
LP, are you?
Yeah, just wanted to touch briefly on the Team Ontario for for this coming year. So some of you may be aware, our identification process has been really challenged in the past year and a half with no events happening. So we've had to be very creative. We used online submissions this past year. And it was it was pretty difficult because a lot of players did not have a recent video of them playing, obviously because no one played. But even very few people had a video of themselves in practice. Understandable, but we just wanted to make sure that all clubs were aware and hopefully you can circulate this information within your teams, especially the teams fourteen U and up, all the way to eighteen U. That for those athletes who are interested in pursuing high performance opportunities within the Team Ontario pathway this coming year in twenty twenty two, it is very important this year that they get into the habit of getting video of themselves in competition and if not possible in competition, at least in scrimmage during practice. So it's pretty easy these days to get a phone or an iPad set up to kind of film part of practice because we already know that volleyball Canada for national team programs will be using a video selection process and we will be aligned in with volleyball Canada in that process. So we will also be using video submissions for portions of our Team Ontario identification process. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew this so that athletes already know that they should try to get some video of themselves in game as soon as possible and as much as possible so that when it comes time to apply for a Team Ontario program, they have enough footage of themselves that they like, that they feel is acceptable to submit for identification. So that is that is the quick update for for Timo that we wanted to share with everybody.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I know that was a lot of information. So you will be having questions, I'm sure. We're going to get to any other questions that that we want to answer here. But if you have any questions later today or next week, whenever the staff is always available to be reached by email. That's all our emails there. It also can be found on our website in the about page about us. So feel free to contact any one of us about anything. Do we have any other questions, Alicia, that you would like to give out? We answered a lot of them. Awesome. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around. We really do appreciate you guys taking the time to hang out with us on a lovely Thursday, Wednesday evening. But that's it for now. So thank you, everybody.